Good morning. Good morning, everyone. In the absence of the chairman and vice chairman, I call this meeting to order. The first order of business is to select a chairman pro tem to preside over today's meeting. Is there a motion for a chairman pro tem?
I make the motion.
Who?
This is Ben.
Uh, Ben, unfortunately, you're not, you have to be, you'll have to be admitted afterwards, so.
I got you.
Someone physically present.
Well, I can make a motion to make, uh, maybe offer it to Gerald.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Linda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Nothing personal.
Okay, so the motion fails.
Okay.
We have another motion.
How about our professor, Linda?
Okay, motion to, for Linda, as the...
If she's...
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Benson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye with your hands up, please. Opposed? Okay, the motion fails.
Well, one thing we can do without, while we're waiting to figure out who's going to be running the meeting, is we can take a motion to accept Dr. Ben Hirschenson, um, who's appearing virtually. Is there a motion to accept him?
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Ben, you, you, you're on, you're back online.
All right, thank you, thank you, good morning.
Do you have any, do you have any motions? I do not recommend nominating yourself, appearing virtually.
I mean, if, is it possible for, again, what are you looking for, a chair to run the meeting?
Correct. Correct.
Um, I would volunteer to run the meeting if that's, if that's okay, as vice chairman.
Must be physically present.
Yeah, I think you really need to be physically present to run this meeting. It's already starting off fantastic, so.
I got you. Little bit behind.
I'm not offering anymore, I've offered two. How about, I make a motion for Gary then?
Decline.
Well, there's one person left on his dais. Oh, two, I'm sorry, apologies, two. Any other motions?
Would either, would anyone like to nominate Russ Winn?
Yes, I'll nominate.
Give me a nomination in a second. All those in favor? Ben?
Yes.
Are you in favor of, of Russ Winn?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. All right.
So that's a three, that carries, okay. Mr. Winn? Can you perhaps grab Mr. Winn's nameplate?
Hey, my all. Thank you. Well, what a wake, what a way to wake up this morning. Welcome to our zoning meeting, let's call the meeting to order. I guess I'm going down the list here. And at this time, um, the invocation, and, um, I'd like to offer it to anybody who would like to, um, to do that. I know normally I'd do it, or you want me to go ahead and do it. Let's bow our heads as we ask God's blessings to be on our gathering today. Father, we come to you and we ask your blessings to rest upon us, Lord, as we look at the matter before us, we pray your wisdom, your guidance, your direction. Thank you for this beautiful city, all the employees and people and firemen and officers that are involved with keeping us, uh, safe and healthy, and we just pray your, your favor upon all that we do today here in this city, and, um, we just pray your hand to be on it. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Bruce if he would, go ahead and lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, roll call.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Gambrell?
Here.
Ms. Waterhouse?
Present.
Mr. Benson?
Here.
Mr. Hirschenson?
Present.
Mr. Rassio. As an excuse, absent for Mr. Rassio.
Very good, thank you, Michael. Um, at this time, the approval of the minutes, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes from, uh, our last session.
So moved.
Second?
Your second?
All in favor? Anybody do a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, I think as common, as, um, what we normally do is, uh, keep public comment, maybe move that to after we hear everybody, um, from the, um, community development and from, uh, the people that are here today, so we'll reserve that if there's any public comment, um, towards the end there. So at this time, we are looking at case, uh, name, Bayview on Estero Bay Residential Plan Development, Commercial Plan Development, um, and so we're, this is a case that's before us today, and at this time, I'd like to see if, uh, maybe the, um, um, the community development would like to come up and personnel would like to come up and...
At this time, I'd also like to swear in all witnesses, this is a quasi additional hearing, all those preparing to give testimony today, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning, for the record, Jacque Wilkenson with Community Development. This is a amendment to an existing plan development. This is the second, um, public hearing amendment that is proposed for this property. Uh, the request is outlined in your packets, uh, so mainly they're asking to go ahead and remove some uses that were previously approved, um, go ahead and add an additional residential dwelling unit type, um, and then changes to the master concept plan to go ahead and effectuate that. Also, they are adding 5.3 acres from an adjacent plan development into this project as well. Typically, in these cases, the applicant presents first, and then staff will go ahead and follow up with their presentation to supplement.
Uh, good morning, for the record, Rich Yovanovich on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to do a brief overview of the project, and then Alexis will take you through this, more of the specifics. Mark Wilson, Lisa Van Dean, and Ray Piasente are here from London Bay Development. I'm the attorney on the project, Alexis Crespo and Josephine Medina are the planners for the project, uh, I think it's Cesario Leos, and Jackie LaRocca are the engineers for the project, Ted Tresch is our transportation consultant, and Shane Johnson is our environmental, environmental consultant for the project. Uh, the parcel is, uh, a little, it's almost thirty and a half acres, it's at the end of Coconut Road, just north of the Hyatt Regency, and as Jackie said, we already have an existing PD on the project, and what we're here to do is to, uh, basically eliminate one of the development options on the property and make it purely a multifamily residential project. As I'm sure you all are aware, the project is Salt Leaf on Estero Bay, it's a Ritz Carlton It's a legacy project for obviously my client, and I think for the city of Bonita Springs. It will be a world-class residential community, it's probably the last remaining waterfront parcel in southwest Florida, other than I guess the town of Fort Myers Beach now. It will provide, and it does currently provide, a lot of public access to Estero Bay, and all of that is being provided at no expense to the taxpayers. It's very important, and we said this repeatedly at our neighborhood information meetings, we are not changing any of the public commitments previously made for this project. As Jackie said, we are adding five acres to the P, to the PD, we're not asking for any increases in density. Uh, we are essentially eliminating what was the continuing care option for, uh, development on this property. Uh, we are staying at the three hundred units multifamily. Uh, we're adding two family and townhouse uses to the, the development options on the property where the two residential towers are not going. Uh, we're eliminating an isolated preserve, and we will be mitigating for that off-site. We are modifying the development regulations and the master plan to address the changes that we're requesting today. We are going to make sure that the project stays consistent with the already approved transportation impacts, so we are including a transportation matrix to assure that everything stays the same if we decide to convert multifamily units to, uh, two-family or townhome, we have a matrix to make sure we say transportation neutral. We do have a few deviations that we're adding, uh, one is related to, uh, the restaurant, we are, could have a valet program, so we're asking for a reduction in parking related to the, the restaurant, uh, we're allowing for some five-foot sidewalks within the residential project, and allowing for some temporary signage related to the project. Alexis is going to come up and take you through the master plan changes and more of the specifics regarding the project, and, uh, at the end of our presentation, uh, we'd like you to wait with your questions if possible till the end of our presentation, and we'll answer them then, but of course, feel free to interrupt at any time. Very good. And what's your name? Richard. Rich Yovanovich.
Richard. Did you say Rich?
Yeah, Rich, Richard's when you're mad at me.
Got it.
All right, good morning, Alexis Crespo on behalf of the applicant in RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture. I haven't worked this new system, okay. All right, so I'll walk you through the details of the proposed PD amendment request, just to kind of refresh your memory, many of you have been sitting on the zoning board when we've, uh, first got this approved and then amended it back in 2020, but was most recently amended through a public hearing process back in October of 2020. As Rich said, the acreage currently within the Bayview, uh, PD today is thirty point five acres, we are proposing to add some lands, um, that London Bay owns immediately to the east of that property line, um, into the PD. Uh, the property, uh, has historically been approved for a total of seventy-two, uh, wet slips, twenty-five, uh, dry boat slips or boat storage. Uh, there is a single boat ramp for public use, that was kind of the hot topic when we went through this process the first time, was some people wanted two, and most of the folks in Pelican Landing wanted just the sole boat ramp, so we were really trying to balance the needs of the greater community as well as our immediate neighbors, and landed on the, the one boat ramp and some other amenities I'll walk through. And as Rich said, uh, because the market was unknown, uh, this is obviously a, a large project, we had two development options, the first was just for a standard residential project, the towers would be multifamily condominiums, not age restricted, no, um, continuing care type uses offered, and then the remainder portion of the property, uh, would be ALF type uses to have synergy with the independent living tower. So that was one option, um, uh, to do the ILF, ALF, or just a conventional, um, residential project, and it always allowed for the, um, seventy-five hundred square foot restaurant. Uh, we'd like to emphasize this because this was a, a big commitment, um, really that cemented that original approval, um, was the public amenities that will be provided on the CPD portion of this site, so just to refresh your memory, the public boat ramp, fifteen onsite, uh, boat trailer parking spaces. London Bay also owns a property about a quarter mile to the east of this site, it's technically in Lee County, but that has been zoned to allow for additional overflow, boat trailer, and standard vehicle parking, in addition to the parking we have onsite and are providing. We have ten, uh, wet slips available to the public, as well as two that will be dedicated to Estero Fire and the Lee County Sheriff's Office for, um, first responders, we have a public kayak launch, um, as well as a sunset park at the, um, western terminus of that park area, we'll have park space, um, a publicly accessible waterfront restaurant, which was something we heard a lot about and, uh, integrated, um, into the plan as well. And then, um, just into the details, and this is historically the week's Fish Camp property, just to give homage to that family, and, um, there is a requirement to do some signage and historical type markers on the property, just to let folks know about, um, the lengthy history. Uh, this is our approved master concept plan, all of those public amenities and facilities are in the CPD portion, I don't think you have a pointer, so I think this is the best I can do, is, uh, use the cursor there, but it's at this southwestern portion of the property, it's where the parking, all those wet slips, the restaurant will be located in that spot, the ship store, marina, the sunset park, uh, will be out here, and, um, have a good public access, uh, to the bay. We have a large mangrove preserve area, uh, along the waterfront, that's actually, due to the, the permitting that we've done with the state agencies, that has actually increased in size, so we bumped that up by, we point one seven acres as part of this amendment. The large gray area will be, uh, the tower, uh, the Ritz Carlton residences, and will contain, um, the multifamily dwelling units, as well as, uh, the, the recreational amenities, uh, for that user, as well as private onsite dining and things of that nature.
What are the lines inside of that gray area?
Those are the, it's going to be one podium foundation to contain parking, uh, for both buildings, but there'll be two separate towers, um, visually, uh, coming, coming out of the podium.
So those lines are the footprint of the two towers?
Yes, sir.
Buildings A1 and A2.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, on the approved master concept plan, what we showed was the most intense and sizable type structures that could occur, usually want to show your maximum proposed development program on an MCP, so in this, uh, currently approved example, we have, uh, ALF buildings that were going to be up to seventy-five feet in height, uh, with surface parking for employees and some of our stormwater management infrastructure, but these, these gray buildings on the east side were intended to be, uh, ALF buildings. So now I have advanced to the proposed master concept plan, the west side of the site is unchanged, so all the CPD area, there's been really no modifications there, building A, no changes to height or the location of, of the towers, the mangrove preserve areas, I noted is bumping up in size slightly, it's really this eastern portion of the site that now London Bay has a clear vision of what, uh, they would like to do there, the Ritz Carlton has come on board since the original approval, and it's really kind of helped them determine what's the best use of that property. And, um, what it will be is conventional dwelling units in the form of, of villa, uh, type units, so you can see they, those would occur in these gray areas, the lighter gray is just the residential streets, and the gray areas is where the, the dwelling units would go. And we've got...
What's villa?
The, the villas?
Villa, with a V.
Yes, sir. They could be attached or, or detached, but, uh, they wouldn't be the same size scope or scale of an ALF building, they'd be very residential in character. Uh, the other key change on the, the concept plan is the addition of five acres, um, this allowed us to meander that entry road in a better location, make more room for the residential components in this area, um, and, uh, also provide access to the Raptor Bay property to the north, so this, this layout just worked better with their final plan, so we incorporated that five acres. This is a, a technicality, but we are maintaining the current unit count at three hundred units and adding five acres, so there, therefore, our density is actually going down because the number of units per acres is, is going down, but we're, we're just not changing our three hundred units and adding land, so just want to make that point. Uh, the other key change, um, that we've worked out with staff, we had some back and forth on it, is, I keep, uh, highlighting that, is, uh, there was a preserve area, a point six-three acre, very infested Brazilian pepper patch for all effective purposes, and Shane, Shane John Smith-Passarola is here to speak to it if you'd like, but, um, it was, we were in agreement with staff, it was, it was an upland and it was heavily, uh, infested. The water management district, uh, through that permit, uh, allowed us to eliminate that preserve and mitigate by paying into a mitigation bank, uh, for this area, and so we fully did that with the district. Staff wanted us to address local mitigation though, and that's where we landed with the conditions to be able to eliminate that preserve area, but provide additional preserve area, better quality resort, restored preserve area, um, within the, um, greater project owned by, uh, London Bay. So, the yellow arrow is pointing to where that, uh, preserve, uh, would be located. Um, as I said, we've done off-site mitigation, and what staff asked us to do is, is, it's condition three I in your staff report, and it's to do that acreage plus ten percent, so we took the point six-three, added ten percent, and, um, they're asking that we provide that same amount of acreage as restoration, upland preserve, in the Raptor Bay property, which is to the immediate north of this, where we have a little bit more land to work with. And so we're in agreement with that condition, and these are just some images of what it looks like if you happen to get into the middle of it. Um, so I just referenced condition three I, uh, this just memorializes the proposed changes to the preserve, and so we are, um, reducing that amount of preserve on Bayview, but offsetting it by adding ten percent of the eliminated acreage onto, uh, Raptor Bay. And we, we are just noting here that it could occur in one or two locations on Raptor Bay. Another minor tweak we're proposing to condition three I is the other environmental condition, there were some heritage, uh, trees on the property, mostly on the eastern portion, these are a great asset, we went to the tree advisory board and we proposed to relocate them on the property, there's only a, a few that we needed to eliminate and replant, um, we would like the flexibility to replant either on this property or Raptor Bay, but keep the trees in Bonita Springs in this general vicinity. Um, as the condition was written in the staff report, it just allowed the heritage trees to be put on Raptor Bay, so I think staff was, was fine with that as well. Requested deviations, so there, there were changes to those, um, because of the unique nature of this project, there are, there were a number of, of deviations historically approved, so the first two changes are to modify, uh, previously approved deviations. Deviation A just relates to, uh, building height separation, and we needed to, uh, modify that deviation and the mechanics of it based upon the revised layout in the eastern portion of the site, so instead of, of the ALF buildings, we were doing, uh, single-story residential, and that warranted, uh, changes to that deviation, but we're not putting the towers any closer to the perimeters of the project, they're staying, the towers are the tall structures obviously, and are, are staying put, so this just acknowledges the change in, in the other side. We are modifying deviation thirteen, which was the onsite preservation deviation, it would be conditioned that we could reduce the onsite native, uh, vegetation by, by the, the acreage to eliminate that northeast corner, but, uh, restore point seven acres in Raptor Bay. We had to add a few deviations, uh, deviation seventeen, as Rich noted, is for our public restaurant, uh, we do have parking, uh, parking, service parking at the marina, parking internal to the building that would be open to the public to serve the restaurant, we do have off-site parking within a quarter mile that will have a shuttle service to and from the site. This allows us to tighten up the parking, uh, for that restaurant and offer valet as a, as a new, uh, way of getting less, less, um, backup and less demand for parking on the, on the property, is obviously waterfront property is, is at a premium, and we, we don't want to utilize that, that asset for, um, unused parking, uh, when we have off-site and can easily valet to and from us. Uh, this is, uh, allowed in some of your downtown areas, it's just not explicitly allowed outside of, of certain overlay districts, so we wanted to incorporate, uh, that flexibility into this, uh, project. Deviation eighteen is to allow five-foot wide sidewalks on both sides of the roadways internal to the new residential, uh, community on the east portion of the site, uh, your code requires six, we were asking for a foot of flexibility just because the site is, is so tight, and we're trying to fit in the public amenities, the heritage trees, stormwater to get, you know, uh, water quality treatment before, uh, water goes into the bay, so fitting all that in is, is very tight, and this, this just gives us a little bit additional room. We're also asking, um, for the roadways to sign that there are, through signage along the streets, that there will be, um, that they're sharing the roadway with bikes, and those will be, you know, as I noted, uh, detached and attached villa-type products that will have relatively low traffic on them. And then deviations nineteen and twenty-two, this is, uh, we worked closely with Jackie Gensen, this, this was fairly confusing, the concept was just to have some nice opaque signage along Coconut and into the subject property, letting people know where the sales facility was, uh, letting people know how to get to the golf course, uh, showing images of the property, really to screen views of construction along, along the roadway, so the idea was to do something attractive, um, it, because it does have copy and imagery, it is treated as a sign, and, uh, working with Jackie, we identified four deviations to allow this to happen, uh, related to real estate signage, announcement signs, and height, et cetera, so that's deviations, uh, nineteen through twenty-two, um, and those are the images in your package of, of what we're looking to achieve aesthetically. Uh, so to conclude, we do have your staff recommendation of approval, we're in agreement with all conditions, I showed two little areas of highlight in those environmental conditions just for a little bit of additional clarity, but, you know, substantially, we're here, uh, in agreement with staff that this is, uh, consistent with the Bonita Springs Comprehensive Plan, this site has a specific, uh, future land use category called Coconut Village that allows for this type of resort residential, um, as well as, uh, restaurant and kind of waterfront recreational uses that we're proposing, so we're still entirely consistent with that vision, as well as your land development code, um, the amendment will allow for alternative housing types instead of the ALF based on changes in market demand, we will still, uh, meet or exceed open space requirements, and we're, um, exceeding the preserve, uh, that we're eliminating just off-site, but in close proximity to the property. There are no change to our public marina commitments, and through the trip conversion matrix, um, we're not increasing our three hundred units, and we will ensure that the conversion from ALF to, uh, the residential use will not increase trips on Coconut Road. And with that, our whole team is here to answer any questions.
Would you just say doesn't change traffic on Coconut Road?
Yes, because, um, we have a cap of PMP power trips based on our current, uh, development approval dating back to the previous PD, so we added in the villa, uh, dwelling type into the matrix, and we'll just be converting unused development into the villas to make sure that there's no additional trips, and we're still capped at the three hundred, so in no case will there be more than three hundred units.
So what are the current three hundred dwelling units approved? What type are they, what are they?
I believe we ran those at, at the highest rate, which was all multifamily.
It was one, I'm sorry.
All multifamily.
In two buildings?
The, when, when option...
It may help if you go back to that previous graphic.
Well, and when you do, when you have two options for an MCP, um, staff, staff makes you run trips, your traffic study has to run the trips on the worst-case scenario, so if you're asking for single-family or commercial, you've got to determine which option produces the most trips, and that's what you provide staff, because that's the absolute worst-case it could ever be, and so ALF does not produce as many trips as multifamily, because it's really just the employees coming in and out and some visitors, so we ran our traffic study from the inception of this project based on, on a full residential build-out, because that would be, produce the most trips of any scenario.
So what you're showing us here, two A buildings and three other buildings, I can't read the designation, that's three hundred dwelling units, or is it just the three buildings away from A are three hundred dwelling units?
The intent here was to, uh, locate the dwelling units all within building A, and the three buildings shown, this is again the approved ALF version, the three buildings would house ALF beds, which are treated differently than dwelling units, so those, those would be ALF uses, nursing care facilities, medical offices, things to support that type of project.
ALF, assisted living facility.
Assisted living.
Nursing home, sort of. And we're replacing that with four? Those three buildings are being replaced with four other buildings?
Those are not depicting buildings, those are depicting a residential street with, with, uh, residential homes on either side of the street in the gray areas.
Okay, so let's go to a graphic with the new proposal for buildings. Please.
This is the graphic of the proposed...
I got one here. Shows.
That was the last, is that the last slide?
No.
What page?
I don't know. Okay, okay, good. Uh, page three of fourteen of the staff report. It's called.
Yes, that is what's on your, on the screen as well. This is the same image is on the screen.
Uh, no.
You may, are you looking at the, is it dated?
Oh.
Maybe the staff.
Page three of fourteen, August seventh.
Okay.
Last slide that you had, there you go. Is that, is that what you're?
No, that's, that's what's approved now. What we're asking for is another slide.
This is what we're asking for. This is on four of fourteen.
Somebody, Jackie, somebody?
All right, just so we can get everything on the record. So on page three of fourteen, that graphic is the approved master concept plan that was last amended in 2021 by Waltrip Engineering. Correct. That is the currently adopted master concept plan from 2021. And then on the next page, page four is the proposed. And we just do that so you can understand what's currently approved and then the proposal that's before you.
So the one on page three is going to be replaced by the concept on page four then? Yeah. So we're replacing the assistant living and that kind of facilities with the villas? Yeah, that's what you're asking.
Correct. And I apologize, my slide is slightly different. I believe it's the, the 2019. We've, we've done several amendments on it, but, um, what is shown on page three of your staff report is the ALF layout. And then what's on this screen, which is page four of your staff report is the proposed residential layout.
So we're not going to have any, um, assistant living and all that on that? That's going completely.
We are striking it.
Striking it, right. I know earlier there were some challenges with that, with hurricane. We were just coming out of Ian and, you know, you know, trying to get people. I know there were some, some concerns about that originally, you know? Being so close to the water.
And either, either development option requires a comprehensive emergency management plan and evacuation plan to be approved by the state, whether it's multifamily or the ALF. But noted that when people are upwardly mobile, it's easier to get them maybe to safety.
On the site plan, I guess it's sheet two, sheet two, you show that, um, open space requirement is 13.92 acres and you've provided that. Indigenous preserve required is 6.96 acres and you've provided 3.64 acres. So somewhere we lost three acres in, in the requirement for indigenous preserve. Okay, so three, three acres out of the entire site. And what bothers me about this is, then you can explain what happened to that three acres, where did it go if it went anywhere? But what, what troubles me about this, the way this thing is being approached, it's kind of piecemeal, is many of your deviations deal with reducing distances between buildings, reducing distances between site boundaries and building. It's reducing separation that normally required for light and air in the development. If you add up, what I would love to see is a cumulative addition of all the reductions that you've made in the deviations covered by, when you reduce a setback, for example, from 25 or 30 feet to 15 feet, you're losing open space. Add all those up and see how much open space we're losing in this entire project, how much light and air we're using in the entire project, along with the three acres of indigenous planting that vanished somewhere. So I would ask, I would ask staff to somehow satisfy me is what's, how did this project become much more dense with all these deviations, which is the result of all the deviations? And if you can explain again, what happened to the three acres of indigenous preserve?
Yes, um, when we initially had this RPDCPD approved dating back to the very first approval, we had deviation seven that acknowledged we would just have the mangrove preserve area, which was slightly smaller at that time. And we proffered the northeast corner. So we always had a significant deviation approved related to onsite native indigenous. We've always met our open space, but dating back to the very first approval, city council approved a deviation to allow for, uh, the reduced preserve, that three acre reduction. Now we are reducing it further by the point six three, but offsetting that by with point seven acres.
Offsetting the point six three or you're offsetting the three something?
Well, that, that's, we're not offsetting what's already been approved, no sir. We are offsetting what we're seeking through this application. The, the, the three acres was deemed offset largely by a lot of the public amenities, the long-term maintenance of that facility and area for the city of Benita Springs and its residents.
So are, you're telling me that, that the three acres was approved before in some other iteration?
Correct.
But not an iteration of this site plan? It was approved based on another site plan?
Correct, yes. It was, it was approved with the initial zoning approval for the site.
And you have not offset the three plus acres that we've lost?
Um, it was deemed offset through that, that approval. We were deemed consistent with the land development code and comprehensive plan for meeting the intent of.
It was offset by words and not by land?
Um, we're, we have a sizable, uh, public component within, within the, the site. It's not indigenous preserve, but it's usable park area, marina area, uh, retail, things like that. So it was that, that was a fundamental policy decision that was, that was made at that point. And so today we are proposing to fully mitigate the, the reduction we're seeking through this application and then some. And then, would you like to ask more about that or would you like me to address the building separation?
If, if you can, I would, I would really like to know how much land we're losing by the reduction in setbacks and building separation and so on and so forth.
And the, the, unfortunately, because it is complex, there's some strike underlying in deviation seven. But deviation seven, its location on the property and where it impacts is still, uh, relevant to the tower structure. So we are seeking, uh, a reduction in the building separation due to the height from the northern boundary. That's going to be 75 feet is being proposed and that's already approved through the previous approvals memorialize that. And then from the southern boundary, we're seeking a 205 foot, um, separation, which is, requires the deviation. But this, our design, the, the proposal required just wordsmithing to the language. We're not exacerbating or asking for a greater deviation or to encroach more into setbacks through this application.
Which deviation number are you talking about right now, please?
Deviation seven.
Number four deviation seven, building C does not require any parking. It's on page seven of the staff report.
Is your numbering? That's interesting. So all the, the deviations start on page eight. And that's a listing of all the deviations and includes the ones that are not changing and the ones that are changing. As part of my presentation, I was going to clarify in the conditions.
Okay. Number seven on page nine is what we're talking about right now.
Yes. I have the article.
That says no change requested.
I'm sorry, deviation eight is what changed.
Deviation eight.
So deviation eight is the minimum separation of buildings. Um, this relates to building A1 and A2 to be 20 feet apart. They are towers and, um, but located on the same podium. So we weren't, uh, a hundred percent of that really applies to that kind of scenario, but we included it. And, um, the remaining is, we just changed reference to the eastern portion of the property, the low-rise residential, um, to be located within 115 feet of the towers.
Well, you see what I'm getting at here? This, you know, we've had prior approvals, prior approvals, prior approvals, and now we're, we're looking for a complete change in the site plan or half the site plan. And with more deviations and asking us, asking us and the city council for more deviation approvals. And this is like death by a thousand cuts, you know? But all these numbers do add up somehow, whether approved or not. And I have no feel for how this new site plan fits on the site anymore. You know, it's just, I would love to have a briefing by the staff for this group to say, here's the history of this project. Here are the, here's, here are the plans that we approved, not, or the site plan we were looking at, when these deviations were approved. And here's the site plan we're looking at when we're asking to accept those approvals and accept new deviations. And I really have a hard time doing that because again, it's death by a thousand cuts. It's little nibble here, little nibble there, little nibble here, and all of a sudden we end up with a project that is very difficult to understand, except it's a very large project, very large project, very.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Pardon?
Mr. Chairman, this is Bennett. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ben.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask you a question if I could.
Go ahead.
Uh, more, more of a kind of a point of order. I, I understand what people are saying and, and I can empathize with it. However, um, I'd like to take a step back and perhaps when you just said to have someone from staff, I, I like to modify that by asking, um, the attorney, city attorney, as to the legality of this modification of use relative to the original order that was adopted or approved back in 2020. Now, I don't know what the ordinances are. I don't know the code, but I think the nub of this whole discussion would certainly help me advance my opinion or comments if I just was able to hear a very brief summary on the part of the attorney to clarify changing use from three years ago to where we are right now.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Herson. The legality is that this is just, this is the process that amendment comes, comes in, whether it's a concept plan or it's a use amendment. In this case, what I gather from just the presentation thus far is that the outside boundaries, as far as the densities, intensities of the use are, are not increasing. If anything, they're decreasing. What was originally proposed, as my recollection is, I believe up to seven buildings, uh, two high rises and then several mid-rise buildings. The eastern portion that's on the screen right now are those, those prior mid-rises. Multi-family was a use in addition to ALF because at the time, the, the project didn't know what, what, um, mix of independent living, uh, multifamily living and assisted living was going to be provided. And although I haven't seen architectural renderings, what my understanding is that those buildings that, uh, Mr. Gambrell was showing in, in the prior approval, there were, I think, at least four 75-foot, uh, towers are now going to be replaced with single or two-story attached or detached, uh, essentially single-family home villas, townhouses. So that, that seems to be the, the bulk of the request. I'm a little, I am a little unclear on, on what some of the deviation setbacks are. My, my guess is, and I'll, I'll leave this to staff to give the history on this, is that, uh, to Mr. Galloway's point, when you, when you have high rises, then you really are concerned about, uh, light and air and separations. And when you have single family, that's not such a big deal. And so my guess is that the deviations are being, uh, requested to match the plans to the words of the text. So the text drove a lot of, of what was on the, the plans before. But I, I think the rest of the questions are all really for staff.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just close up on a couple of points which Ronnie reiterates. The site has always met the city's open space requirements. It will continue to meet or exceed the city's open space requirements. I respect this has been through several amendments, but what we're trying to do is, as Derek said very well, is convert the eastern portion of the site from mid-story, which would have been 75 feet tall ALF buildings to hide, to house non-residential and residential ALF uses and convert that to what will be a lower density product type in the form of these villas, townhomes that will be, as he noted, one and two stories. So the, the effect of this amendment will be a lower density, certain, certainly a lower built form in that eastern portion of the site. And deviation eight is, references an internal setback. And I know Jackie does a great job of going through this in detail, but it's really just modifying, this was referring to, uh, you know, the different development program. Now we're referring to low-rise residential uses and we're proposing a 50-foot setback. But it's an internal setback. It's not something that will impact any, any neighbors or putting anything closer to Coconut Road. With that, thank you very much. Good morning again. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. So we do have staff's presentation and, and typically what I like to do is, because that kind of, and I don't know what information we're going to go ahead and present. So, um, where there's areas where the information might be duplicative, I'll go ahead and not touch on that so much, but please feel free to stop me at any time if you'd like to go into more slides in detail. I will say that this presentation is formatted based on the evaluation of the requests before us. It, it doesn't really go into too much of the history. However, we did attach into our attachment A, the 2020 ordinance, the 2021 ordinance, and then the county's offsite, um, ordinance for the, for the offsite parking. So I do have those that embedded, but I will definitely be happy to touch on any history questions that you have. Just, just bear with me if I have to flip through those documents. So moving along, so the review team for this request was myself as the lead planner just because I have so much history with the project. I've taken it through since its inception. Um, we do have Laura Gibson, who also has been with the, the review since the beginning. She's with Environment Sciences. Tom Ross, our transportation engineer, he is attending via Zoom as well. So he's on the phone if you have any questions relative to that. Stuart Smith is our, um, project engineer. He reviewed this request in terms of the changing of the stormwater narrative. There's really not a lot of information that goes into, um, the rezoning application at this time as it relates to stormwater management. But if we do need, need him, he is a phone call away and I can have him come up. Jay Sweet is our, um, surveyor for the city. So he reviewed the legal and sketch. And then we also had the Village of Astero and Lee County Community Development on the request as well. We truly believe in, um, inter-agency coordination and we know this has always been a concern of the residents of Lee County, um, Astero and Benita. So we want to make sure we have those lines of communication open. And then we also had David Theriak, um, on the review. And typically he gets involved when something might go to litigation. So, um, so he's just been on this for, from the periphery.
Dawn's here because?
Oh, gosh, Sean. So sorry.
Well, yeah. I heard his name come up during Brazilian peppers, I think. So should he be on?
So Sean is our bike pedestrian coordinator in this capacity for this case. He also does have environmental expertise, but for this purpose, he reviewed our deviation for the sidewalk, um, which I'm not going to quote the number by, um, memory, um, but it's one of the new deviations that they requested for the internal road. So I will have him available if you have questions on that. Sorry, Sean. Okay, um, so here we have the location map. Sorry, where's? The pointer. Oh, I'm, all right, usually there's a pointer here. Sorry about that. Um, so, uh, the location map is just to show you, so we have two planned developments that we reference in the staff report. So I really wanted you all to kind of understand some of the bearings. So we have the existing Bayview RPDCPD, which again, was approved in 2021, or 2020 and amended in 2021, um, which comprised approximately 30 acres or so. And then we have a portion of the Pelican Landing CPD RPD, and we reference it as land development area F1. And that parcel was created. And that parcel was created in 2020 as a result of litigation by a private, or a prior property owner, and London Bay had purchased the property shortly thereafter, once the approvals for that parcel were approved by the city council in 2020. So when you hear us, or hear me reference Land Development Area F1, that is the parcel we are talking about, and that's a portion of that parcel that they're asking to be incorporated into the Bayview Plan Development, and that is five-point-three acres.
So Jackie, to catch the, back up one more, back, so to catch the board up with mine, your conversation yesterday, this thing we're looking at now is not in our packet, right?
This exact map is not in your packet, so.
So when we see the site plan of everything, it includes
That piece.
That piece.
All of the big yellow area.
Includes the Bayview CPD-RPD and that portion of Pelican Landing.
This has got, this has got both of them in it.
Correct, because that's.
Area one and the Bayview CPD-RPD.
That is correct, because that's what they're requesting.
So this building in the southeast corner is not being utilized now, and that's getting raised.
I cannot attest if it's being utilized now, that is a question for London Bay to answer.
It doesn't matter. It, it, it goes away.
Correct.
We're going to pave over it.
Approved for, for timeshare sales.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so as I explained to Mr. Gambrell, the reason why there are no specific site addresses for you to find the location is because the property appraiser doesn't address it. So it, it's referenced on Lee County Property Appraiser as Bayview or Golf Course. So it was most appropriate, in my opinion, to go ahead and say that the property was at the intersection of Coconut Road and Coconut Point Resort Drive, so that's why I referenced it as the northwest corner. So background, Alexis did go over this a little bit. So the Bayview CPD-RPD was a plan development and actually a conference of plan amendment that was processed in 2018. They successfully received conference of plan approvals to create a new category, change the map, and also companion rezoning for the entitlements that Ms. Crespo went over, and staff has no objection to the analysis that she gave regarding the history of that. As I explained, the Bayview to CPD, that is the off-site location that the applicant also referenced in their testimony, that was approved by Lee County and is authorized to support uses for the Bayview project. So it's for overflow Marina parking, it's for their employee parking, it's for the restaurant overflow parking. So that's why it's important to have that also in your packet, so you understand how those, all those pieces work together. And then again, you have the Pelican Landing CPD-RP, which I already explained when we had the location map. So process and procedure, there was some questions about that. So again, this is an amendment to an existing plan development, and we predicated our analysis based on the applicant's specific request. So, so based on their request, we are reevaluating their new master concept plan, their development regulations, any deviations that may need to change as a result of this new plan layout, and then the new deviations that they have requested. The intent of the plan development regulations are based on our land development code, you know, how we review those, and then the standard of review and conclusions, and how we have to go ahead and prepare our recommendation. Also, public comment, we did have courtesy mailings that were sent out by the applicant. We did receive one at time of packet reproduction that I did include in there for someone who opposed the development but did not explain why. And then we received another one after packet reproduction, and same scenario, they just checked opposition but didn't explain what their concerns were. So unfortunately, I can't help understand if there is a concern or, or without more information from the public, so hopefully they will reach out to staff or attend the public hearing so we can assist them.
Have those public hearings been held?
No, sir. Zoning Board's the first hearing, and then there will be a public hearing before city council, which is my next, or my last bullet point, so on September sixth, this is scheduled for first reading, tentatively. And then the second reading is September twentieth, and those are both public hearings where any member of the public is welcome to.
At the council level.
Correct.
What has been the, has any public voiced anything since 2020? I mean, you know, I know the beginning was a little bit.
So the applicant does have their neighborhood summary information in there with the meeting notes. Typically, a lot of it comes down to Coconut Road. And the tra, and the traffic impacts, and a lot of the concern with mainly construction and the timing of other projects in the area, so. And again, the best that we've done is just coordinate with our other agency partners at the county and the Village of Astero to go ahead and help alleviate any of those concerns. I do know Bayview is under construction right now, they do have a site permit issued for the main tower, the podium and the two tower elements. And the Infinity at the Colony, they too have a development order that's partially approved, they're just waiting, they're working with BSU on their utilities. So there was a lot of concern on the construction management and traffic, but we're, we're definitely encouraging coordination internally with those communities and then the agencies.
I see that everywhere in Bonita, it's expanding. Dump trucks and everything, I mean, it's just, go ahead.
The Hyatt isn't commenting on this at all?
No, so the applicant did reach out previously to the Hyatt, especially at their last amendment where there was a request to modify the height. And they did not participate at the public hearings to let us know if there were concerns, and that amendment was approved in 2021. So I've not heard anything from the Hyatt based on this request. So the staff report format, and mainly I like to go over this in case we have a lot of concerned residents, they can understand how the staff report is laid out, but we went ahead in the report and exhibits, we lay out the background of the project, our conclusion and our recommendation on all the conditions and the deviations. There's a legal and sketch, so we know how or what property this approval will, you know, bind it to. The new master concept plan, which shows the deviation locations and the property development regulations, and then the, the new modified schedule of uses, rather. Attachment A is our summary staff analysis, where we go into a little more data analysis on how we formed our recommendations. We go into our compatibility analysis, environmental considerations, and our infrastructure analysis. Other comprehensive plan analysis is also done, and then we go ahead and have a table outlining the standards of review that formed the staff recommendation and how we found the application, you know, if it was consistent, mostly, partly, all the way, there's that table in the back as a quick guide. And then, of course, I have the historical documentation for the project. Attachment B is a more, a more voluminous information package for you all, that is the applicant's analysis. And that's always available online, so we can conserve paper, because it's over one hundred and fifty pages worth of data. So again, our staff recommendation was approval with conditions. I'll try to go over this quickly, but we agree with the applicant's analysis on the designation of the property in terms of the comprehensive plan future land use map. This is a part of Coconut Village land use category that was uniquely created for this property. Also has resource protection, which encompasses the, the wetlands that are under private ownership. And then we have the Lee County Outlying Suburban, which is that Pelican Landing Land Development Area F1. It's an old county holdover based on annexation, and went into that a little bit in my, my staff report. The current plan development, Alexis went over this already, it previously had two development options approved, just so it could provide them the flexibility to respond to market conditions, if it was more beneficial to build a continuing care element, or if it was more beneficial to go ahead and develop multifamily. Obviously, they're eliminating the continuing care and independent living, because they secured a development order to go ahead and build their multifamily project. And they also added in 2021 a hotel conversion. So those are the current entitlements that are approved for the residential density part. The RPD also was approved in 2021 to add a restaurant that is open to the public, so that was previously vetted by the council. And the CPD, that portion hasn't changed since 2020, and Alexis went into great detail on that with the public benefits that will be available to the city. In terms of existing use, as I explained, they have already secured a local development order, which is a site permit for their, what we call the horizontal construction, so all the infrastructure. So roadways, water management system, landscaping, buffering, and then the location of the, the tower component. They're currently in for a site plan amendment to go ahead and build the, the restaurant. And also, the Marina was also approved too as part of the first phase, so those are all under construction.
Currently, they're all, yeah.
Correct, their, their site permit is currently under construction. And then in terms of the RPD-CPD for Pelican Landing Land Development Area F1, that was previously approved by the county and continued by us for the sales center for the timeshare property. That's on that five-point-three acre tract. All right, the amended master concept plan, that is Exhibit B on pages eighteen through twenty of the staff report. Alexis went over this in detail, and I too will go over this a little bit more, but it's comprised of three sheets, so you have the overall master concept plan, which locates access points, building locations, also identifies the location of deviations. Sheet two is a lot of the text, and that goes into the site summary characteristics or property development regulations for both the RPD and the CPD portions, the open space deviations and notes to go ahead and actually implement the plan. Sheet three is your CPD inset, just because the CPD is smaller on sheet one, they wanted to go ahead and provide you a separate sheet that shows a little more detail on that tract. Okay. So I went ahead and clouded so you could understand some of, some of the changes here. So I clouded this area because that portion of the plan is changing, because we're adding acreage and we're changing the residential dwelling unit types. So, so the building envelopes are going to change. The, the rest of the density that is left over is proposed to be spread on the balance of the property. They have the roadway configuration, there's the change to the building separation here, which was again previously approved to go ahead and memorialize the mid-rise multifamily buildings that were there. So that has to change, because we were actually specifying a building and a specific number in terms of the separation, but also building, I think it says DM in the report. So, I mean, that's, that has to change, because the dwelling unit type is changing, the building's actually, the new building type is going to reduce in height. So, so we had to change that deviation, because it was so specific.
What was the separation again? What was, I mean, I'm just curious, just.
It was forty-five feet, which is.
It was and now.
It is now, they're saying fifty, but I liked, I don't like to quote from memory, my kids have done a number on me, so. So we have, so Building A, the low-rise residential, to be forty-five feet, and then we have one hundred and fifteen feet from Buildings A and B. Now, Building B is the restaurant building, which was previously, which was previously approved by the council to have that restaurant building there, so the deviation language is to clarify the building separation from that. And it is all meant to be an integrated project. So users of the Marina are allowed to use that restaurant, residents in the tower will utilize that restaurant. We also have here the signage deviations along Coconut Road, so deviations nineteen through twenty-two. In this small clouded area over here, we also have some temporary signage deviations that are shown on the plan, and also the sidewalk deviation, the bike lane deviation. So those are the triangles that you see. Are there any questions on the proposed master concept plan that staff can answer? And again, we can do that towards the end.
Curious about the Village of Astero. They're all, I mean, they're, I know they're in partnership, just curious.
So we distribute to the Village of Astero, and their administrative support goes ahead and distributes it to their staff. So, so typically, it could be their public works director, it could be their community development director, but they had no comments for this request. And as we explained, the, the overall density is not going to change, which would typically impact your trips, which was the most concerns that the village had initially. But, I mean, they support our collaboration with them, and our willingness to work with them on all of our permit reviews. And they return the favor too.
How does going from assisted living to villa dwelling not increase trips?
So under the development option that they pursued for the main towers was the multifamily concept. And so they've constructed just under, I think it was two hundred and forty. There's the pointer. Thank you very much. Yay, we have a yellow dot. Thank you, Sean. So the option that they ultimately pursued for the multifamily development is three hundred dwelling units. They have constructed a portion of those multifamily units. The request is to add the townhouse and two-family attached villa product for the balance of that density instead of building mid-rise or high-rise multifamily dwelling units. So in that instance, and you'll see in the transportation memo prepared by their consultant, which was reviewed also by our transportation engineer, there's a conversion matrix based on the multifamily trip generation rate. And so in that instance, you can see, depending what they come in, we will look at that matrix to make sure that they're not going to exceed the trips. But also, no instance can they exceed three hundred dwelling units. So how I interpreted the analysis was they were pursuing the multifamily option, which was allowed by the, the zoning. And especially now as part of this amendment, since they are doing that, they're actually taking away the continuing care and the independent and the assisted living option.
Is it possible for us to hear from the traffic consultant on the projections and the modeling he used to, to indicate that the, would the impact would not be as great as some perhaps might perceive?
Any objection from the rest of the board?
I would like to hear that, because I have a question on the, on the table itself. No objection.
Do you want, would you like to do that now, or when we get more into the traffic?
Ben, would you like Jackie to finish up her presentation, then have, then immediately dovetail into the traffic?
Sure, by all means, I just wanted to get that point in there, because I think a lot of my questions will probably be answered, yes, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you, sir.
That's a good speaker, isn't it?
On, on sheet two, again, where things are clouded, is, is a result of the change of bringing in additional acreage, that obviously changes your open space calculations of what's required versus what's provided. You have the changes to the deviation.
Where's that table?
This is on sheet two of the master concept plan.
Yes?
Correct.
Thank you.
So all this information that's clouded essentially changes because you're adding acreage, you're adding different dwelling unit types, so the, the property development standard table that implements again the different portions of the plan development, depending on what they're building, that changes. So by, by logic, that sheet has to change as well. So that's just outlining the different changes that result based on the request that is before us. So that's Exhibit B, Sheet two on page nineteen of the staff report. And this is the CPD inset, that is Sheet three of the master concept plan, and no changes are proposed. The schedule of deviations, those are on pages eight through fourteen of your staff report. Alexis went into good detail on those, so I'll just go ahead and supplement, and again, we do have Laura Gibson here from Environmental, and I do have some other slides where I can ask her to come up, so she can go over those details for you. But what changed is the location of the deviation for the indigenous preserve, so that was an existing deviation that. that was an existing deviation that is being requested to change based on the new site plan, so I have that circle as a change to an existing deviation. There's also the change to the building separation deviation, and again, that's because the unit type changed and the height of the building changed, so that has to change because we have a new dwelling unit type and a different height proposed under that condition. Again, with the clouded conditions, we have the bike pedestrian and temporary signage that has been requested. So the signage is included as a separate graphic in your packets as a separate exhibit. Staff did support those changes, and the reason why I felt comfortable doing so is our sign code, it doesn't provide much flexibility for temporary signage to market new communities or redeveloped communities. And we actually just approved earlier this spring an amendment to our downtown code for signage for projects that are actively under construction. The city currently doesn't have any construction screening standards, so what we did for, especially in our downtown environment, is allowed for essentially what we call is a sign wrap, but it's construction screening, but you can have an advertising message on that, subject to certain conditions. So when London Bay approached us to ask about this proposal for some of these temporary signage options, again, I had no reservations just because we just explored this far downtown. It's very common in urban areas, it helps screen construction, which could be otherwise unsightly, it helps garner positive support and messaging to the public that a marina that is soon to be open to the public is coming. You have the Hyatt to the south, that is a destination point, that's where their pool is, so to help screen it, and again, have some positive messaging of redevelopment efforts, was not a concern of staff, we actually thought it'd enhance the plan development. So, so again, for that temporary signage, which does also condition a time limit, we had no objection to that. The other signage deviations dealt with just signage at intersections for directional signage, the code doesn't really have that for temporary conditions, it has it for permanent. So again, no objection to go ahead and allow that for this temporary condition. There's also signage that I would go ahead and consider kind of like, like a model row type situation, and I've seen that in communities such as the town of Ave Maria, I've seen it at Lakewood Ranch, so again, with the concept and based on the information they provided to us, I thought it was an enhancement to the plan development, and it didn't cause a detriment to the public safety, which are the two elements that we look at for deviations. So, so the temporary signage deviation, which is 19 through 22, staff did recommend approval as presented, and it, most of them are limited to a 24-month period, so again, it's temporary. And relative to the new deviation for the parking, for their private restaurant, totally makes sense not to require additional parking, the residents are already parking in the towers, so why require more parking? And then their requests for, for the valet parking, staff has no objection to the use of valet, they do have infrastructure to support that within a distance that's manageable for their team to run shuttle service back and forth. They also were requesting to reduce the parking requirement for the restaurant, and staff didn't feel like we had enough information to support that yet, but there are other administrative mechanisms for they, for them to go ahead and propose that to staff during the development order process, should they still want to pursue that. But overall, we have no objections to utilizing a valet program, whether it's onsite, and in their case, offsite, because they do have the infrastructure and a support in place to make it successful, so we don't have a site functionality issue.
Is the private restaurant included in the 7,500 square feet?
No, that is ancillary use to the residents.
So the 7,500 square feet only applies to the public restaurant?
Correct, yes, sir. The other change is the schedule of uses, so that's Exhibit C, and that is for the RPD portion to go ahead and remove the continuing care facility, independent living option. So we don't have options anymore, we just have one residential development that they're pursuing, which is the multifamily concept, which adds townhomes and two-family attached. And by definition of the comprehensive plan, that is considered a multifamily unit, so they're consistent with the comprehensive plan relative to the use. For the CPD, there are no changes. The traffic memorandum, and this is probably where we want Ted to come up, and again, we have Ted, sorry, we have Tom Ross also available via Zoom, this allows us to go ahead and allow the townhouse and two-family attached product subject to the trip conversion matrix. I went ahead and clicked this table right here, so Ted would like to go ahead and elaborate on that table and the trip generation rates, I'll let him do so.
Thank you, Jackie.
Good morning, Ted Trish with TR Transportation Consultants. Just a brief explanation of what, what we've done in the past to get to this point. With the original PUD going back to 2018, as Alexis indicated in her original testimony, because there were two options in the master concept plan, one was the 300 traditional multifamily units, and one was a multifamily with an ALF component. So we worked with Tom Ross, your transportation consultant, and we have to do the trip generation in our analysis based on the worst case and the highest trip generation of the project. And in this case, the highest trip generation is the traditional 300 multifamily, traditional multifamily units. So that's what the analysis was done back in 2018 and carried forward from that point forward. And then there was amendments done, we added the public restaurant in an amendment, there was another analysis done, another traffic study to add that in with the 300 multifamily. And so that's where we're at today. So we're removing the ALF units, so we're, we're still at the 300 traditional multifamily units, and that's what we're not increasing, the trip generation that those, that's associated with those 300 traditional multifamily units. What this table does is allow some flexibility with, within those multifamily unit types. What the trip generation, the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers, they've broken out some trip generation in the most recent trip generation edition, ITE continuously updates their trip generation information over the years, as they get new data in over the years, they update their, their trip generation manuals, and they've broken out the trip generation for the multifamily products. There's now trip generation for a low-rise multifamily, which is your one to two-story townhouse type product, there's a mid-rise, what's called a mid-rise multifamily, which is a three to 10-story type building, a three to 10-story building, and then there's a high-rise, which is a 11-story and higher. So what this, what this table does is break out the trip generation between those three different uses, so the applicant has the flexibility as the development program changes on those, on that separate Easter track, he has the flexibility to, as the development program may change, the market conditions may change, to, with some flexibility of those units. So we don't exceed the trip generation that we originally analyzed, and the analysis that was originally conducted, that was reviewed by the city staff, the Village of Astero, Lee County, so our impacts that we've always analyzed have not been exceeded, and that's what this memo addresses, and that's what Mr. Ross has reviewed and staff, and so that's, that's where we're at at this point, so I'd be more than happy to address any additional questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Multifamily high-rise, we have those, right, on this site plan? Multifamily high-rise, that's a category. Multifamily mid-rise, we don't have any of those, right, on this site plan? We have attached, single-family attached, we have that. So multifamily mid-rise, I don't understand why we have traffic generation for a use we don't have.
Yes. We still have the ability within the PD to do mid-rise, we have to modify the master plan, but we still have that use in there.
But the plan before us doesn't have any of those in it.
Correct, but you still, we still, we still have, as a potential listed use, but the plan in front of you.
Potential, well, those potentials are infinite, but we don't have any of these, any multifamily mid-rise on this plan, right?
Correct, the intention right now is to do something other than mid-rises, which we concurrently do. Under any scenario, our trips are coming down because the most, the traditional high-rise multifamily, unless I'm reading his table wrong, generates the least trips.
Right, and single-family attached generates the most.
Right, so we'll have to, we'll have to bring down the traditional multifamily down, so under any scenario, the density is coming down, unless we build all high-rises, which we can. Thank you.
Which we can or can't? Cannot, thank you, thank you, Rich.
And, and Ben, did you have any questions? I know this was something you were, had some questions on transportation.
No, I, I got the answer to my question.
Good.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this goes into a little more detail on the temporary signage plan, which I went over with the slide where I had the summary of the deviations, as I explained, it's, it's mainly something where it's visible from the right-of-way along Coconut Road for the Hyatt and also the Pelican Landing Marina for the, what I call the construction screening portion along Coconut Road, and then the rest of this temporary signage is internal to the Hyatt timeshare property, of which London Bay is part developer and owner in. So that's Exhibit E, and staff did recommend approval of that deviation request. Environmental and stormwater, and I second, I'll ask Laura Gibson to come up, since there were some questions about that, but this request again was reviewed by Laura, also Stuart Smith, our city engineer, and also we had Lee County Department of Natural Resources on the review, just because we have an air-local agreement with them for regional stormwater items, and there are some changes based on the request which impact on condition four of the original zoning, which is memorialized into condition three, so I'll have Laura come up.
Russ?
Yes.
We're an hour and a half in.
We need a break.
My eyeballs are yellow.
Okay, 10 minutes?
Please, Laura, please, Laura, take a break.
All righty, we will, we will return back at what, 10:35 for bathroom breaks and just a little recess?